Like the call to order, the July tenth meeting of the school committee. We're gonna start with Pledge of Legions. Pledge of Legions. Now we'll do introduction of members.
Uh Matt Kedlano, Millville.
Chuck Dunton, Blackstone.
Tara Skolby, Blackstone.
Harry Goddett, Blackstone.
Erin.
Erin Benaco, Millville.
Dean Scarrow, Director of High School.
General Paul Galeroni, Assistant Superintendent, Director of Student Services.
First time you've said that.
Yes, it is. I did.
Uh Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Next, we will move on to Consent Agenda A. If I could have a motion to approve the warrants.
So moved.
And the second. Brought to the board by Charles, and seconded by Tara. And all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone abstained? That passes. And I don't think we have anyone here for the public forum. So we'll move right on to school committee items. The first one being the declassification of the executive session minutes for March tenth, two thousand twenty-two, March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, April sixth, two thousand twenty-three, and May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. And that's just to make available odd minutes from our executive sessions. Everyone is looking for them.
Does that, we make a motion to do so? Make that motion to approve the minutes?
Any second?
Second.
Who's second?
Voted by Chuck, seconded by Matt. And then all those in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstains? Our motion also passes. And then next on our agenda is Millville Elementary School Water Update. And Jason, you have that for us?
Yes, great. Happy evening, everybody. Um, and uh hello Erin, calling in. Um, I just wanna give an overview of uh essentially where we are since um the last larger conversation we've had about this, which if everybody recalls was in May. I think it was May fifteenth where we met with the uh, the school committee met with the Board of Selectmen, the town administration from Millville, and representatives from the Massachusetts DEP, the Central Region Director, Mary June Pigsley, and some of her team members. We also had at that meeting, uh, presence was um a, the water operator for the system that Millville was employing or has been employing, um, and uh the water consultant for the town of Millville as well. Um, at that meeting, we discussed both short and long-term strategies for addressing the chronic water issues at Millville Elementary School. Uh, you may recall that uh at the end of the school year, the school district moved away from utilizing the well altogether and actually shifted to bulk water, which we were essentially trucking in using henshaws as a company, um, and filling the tank externally with that. Um, we were doing that because we were waiting for the town to submit their corrective action plan uh to Mass DEP, which at the meeting on May fifteenth, they committed to submitting uh that corrective action plan. That plan was submitted um on June thirteenth by Mass DEP. Um, and I have in front of uh the committee members this evening um a correspondence from the deputy, I'm sorry, from the director, the regional director of Mass DEP, Mary June, who was here with us that evening. Um, and I'll paraphrase it uh for the public, but essentially just saying, you know, at this date, uh, this is what we talked about. We received on June thirteenth your plan, uh, but essentially to date, um, we do not have the permit requests that are required to change the chemistry of the water from the chlorine to the promanganate. We might recor- I'm sure you all recall um that the water operator for the town, Northeast Water Solutions, uh, is the company vendor that Millville uses, was very strongly against um the corrective action plan in the fact that uh he felt strongly and still does that um the beaver dam, or the, the beavers in the water uh are causing or could potentially cause some significant health issues to uh the students and staff at Millville. Um, so in the corrective action plan that was submitted by the water operator uh on Millville's behalf to Mass DEP, that issue was not addressed. Um, you might recall that at that meeting, there was some dialogue back and forth with Mass DEP and others at the table that um the beaver's not an issue. That wasn't something that, you know, uh, some parties at the table wanted to even discuss. Um, and so it's not in their plan, uh, Millville's corrective action plan. However, um, we learned today of, I think quickly, why there wasn't a permit pulled to change the chemistry over uh because the water operator, Northeast Water Solutions, uh, does not want to move forward without removing the beavers and deconstructing the dam. So um, it is unfortunate to say that it feels at this point like we are back where we started. Um, it doesn't seem as though the needle has moved on, uh, on, on any end of this. Um, and that, um, you know, all of the parties feel very strongly about what needs to be done, but unfortunately, none of them at this point are, are agreeing on that plan. Uh, so I'm gonna make the recommendation to the school committee this evening um that we take two, I think, very important steps. The first is, um, I think we need to be very clear that if the issues are not addressed by August fourteenth, that we do need to move the children out of Millville Elementary School for next school year. That is not something I'm saying lightly. Um, this is something that we have uh thought a lot about. Um, I was very hopeful that we would get to this meeting. Permits would have been put in, the wheels would be in motion, everybody would be on the same page. Uh, unfortunately, that is not the case. Um, so I'm gonna recommend that uh August fourteenth, and when I say the fourteenth, I use that date cautiously because that doesn't mean that if the wheels are in motion and things are done on the eighteenth, that we certainly couldn't allow the children and the staff to be in the building. But I do think we need to set a hard date in terms of, we, we're gonna need two weeks at least to move classrooms and get teachers settled in so that when the students return on August thirtieth, um, they're returning to classrooms that are prepared to receive them. And that will take a couple of weeks. I'm also gonna recommend that we have a second meeting. The school committee has a second meeting in July. Uh, we do have a school building committee meeting on um July twenty-seventh. It's at six PM, it's from six to seven. I know many of the school committee members are on the school building committee. It might make sense to piggyback that and have a school committee meeting at seven PM, just since I think half of the committee will be there anyway. Um, but I wanted to put that out as an opportunity. That would give an opportunity for two things to happen. Uh, one, for the school committee to be able to check in on what is the progress been since uh this discussion this evening and since the town of Millville's water operator uh has sent his latest report, which is about a hundred and eighty pages, um, it might be a little bit more, um, to the town about what he feels needs to be done. And that does include removing uh the beaver dam um and this stagnant water that has resulted from that. Uh, so it would give us an opportunity to check back in on that. That's a couple of weeks from this Thursday. Um, and it would also give an opportunity for the uh district team to finalize our relocation plans and to bring those forward to the school committee to review. Um, so I think we would get two pieces of the kind of objective, if you will, met by giving a couple of weeks for both ends to get working now that we have this information. Uh, the information came from the water operator this afternoon at three twenty-five. I sent it to you as quickly as I could, it went out about three forty. Um, but I do have tonight for your review and consumption, a couple of things. In the um red folder is the entire hard copy of that. So if anybody doesn't wanna read it online, I made one copy just because it's such a hefty document. I may happen to make others. Uh, but it is a full, a very comprehensive uh document. I have not finished reading all of it yet, uh, but I certainly will. Um, but I also included two things that would be important. One I mentioned already, which is essentially the correspondence between uh Mass DEP and the town administrator in Millville. That just talks about what I've shared, which was, you know, we had this meeting. This is corrective action, no permits have been pulled. And the town administrator saying, you know, yes, understood. We're waiting for our water operator to submit uh that information. It should be ready by Monday, that's today. What he submitted is the document that you have, which is not a permit. It's saying we need to meet to talk about next steps. Um, and if I might be so bold to the committee, um, I, I don't know how much the committee has to meet with anybody at this point other than those that you're interested in meeting with, we've done that. The issue is really on the town side between the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator, their water operator, and their water consultant. I don't know at this point what else we could offer to that conversation, we've been part of that. Um, it isn't the school committee in any way, shape, or form in the district that's holding this up. As a matter of fact, we moved our children out of Millville Elementary this summer so they would have full access to the school without any issues. Um, that work hasn't started, permits haven't been placed. So um by giving some time for the Board of Selectmen to think through with the town administrator, the water operator, how they wanna handle that, that would probably be in the best interest of everybody. Um, and then the second document that is included uh in front of you, um, you'll see when you have a moment to look at uh Northeast Water Solutions' recommendation on next steps, that it's referenced in the beginning to look at section five point four, which is pages seventy-eight and seventy-nine of that report. I did pull that, that out and photocopy it, it's double-sided. Um, so that um you could see directly uh what Mr. Ferrari's recommendations are on that. Um, and he states it really clearly uh what needs to happen from his perspective. The engineering um ethics essentially that he's um obligated to work by. And I will say um that I, I'm very pleased about that uh because it is a safety-first code of ethics, as it should be. Um, and at the end, he states pretty clearly that he feels, you know, doing anything against removing the stagnant water, the beaver dam, would be, you know, a, a gross violation of that code. So let me pause here.
Jason, who did you say communicated that they want to read again?
Uh, Mr. Ferrari had mentioned that in one of his communications. That may have been an email or it might have been in the report.
It might have been sent to us, I don't know if it was the email or actually in the report, but I did read that today.
I, I don't think any of us disagreed with him on, on morning the beaver dam moved as well. So um, has there been any reply from, from Peter to this point? I know it just came in at three thirty, but.
The last time I checked email was about five-ten. I logged off to come here and there was nothing at that time. But there could be from now, I, I haven't checked it since five-ten.
Okay. Well, I, I don't disagree with your recommendation of needing to make that plan. We can't wait until August fourteenth to, you know, we have to know what our plan is going to be. And, and I agree with you, like you said, May six- May, May sixteenth we met. Everyone knew what needed to be done and frankly, we have to prepare.
We're almost two months past that original meeting and we are exactly where we were when we left here that night.
I think we're being generous giving them the extra time. It doesn't seem feasible that they could pull through at the last minute and save the day.
Yeah, I mean, short of, so the, the, as we, as I understand it, uh, and I will go back and read through very thoroughly through um Mr. Ferrari's full analysis, but uh as I understand it at this point, and Scott, by all means, weigh in on this if we have this, if we have this wrong, the chemistry change itself takes four or five days. Um, and then there's about ten days of testing that has to happen in order to make sure that the water is um is safe and ready. So that is about two weeks. So our sense was if this is done on or about that date, that would give them the time they would need to continue to run the tests, make sure the water is safe, um, and, and see from there. And if it's not, we have to move classrooms.
That's once the permit is issued.
That's right. Which at this point it has.
So we need to make a motion to add that meeting to our calendar or just?
I don't think so, I think you just, you can add a meeting and, and we'll schedule it and post it and.
Can, can I just add just a few questions on this? Um, and I didn't bring it with me. Our last packet showed, there, there was, it was, was it our last packet that was an action? There was a correspondence with the town administrator in Millville with the DEP?
Um, I would have to.
I saw that in email.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and check. There, there has been some back and forth. Um, the uh corrective action plan was submitted from the town of Millville to DEP on June thirteenth. That was the last big.
Right, eh, well, I've seen, in that packet, eh, in that submittal, wasn't there some, uh, something alluding to that the um, they didn't believe they had to pay for the first run of water because we didn't use it to drink?
There was a separate issue around bulk water and who was responsible.
But that was in the corrective action plan sent to the DEP?
No, the, well, the bulk water was part of the corrective action plan because that was a mitigating, uh, mitigating factor that they did to help address the uh results of the, of essentially the failing water because of the disinfectant byproducts. So they included the bulk water in that report. Um, that was in there.
But there was an opinion there that, by the town administrator, that he didn't feel as though the town.
That was necessary.
And that was in the corrective, in, in a, in a corrective action.
Yes, that is correct.
So we're, I, I'm, I'm having trouble with this because I think at some point, there was a saying that the district is responsible for um maintaining the uh, the, for lack of a better phrase, uh, the water filtration plant that's in the school because it's in the building. At some point, there was a correspondence.
It is of the, it is the opinion of the town administrator that it is the school's responsibility, that is correct.
I, I, I don't, I don't have any faith that this is gonna get resolved. And I, I'm, I fear that that August fourteenth deadline um leaves the district and, and the administration of the district hands tied to give that kinda notification to parents.
What our plan.
Blushing is a whole.
So our plan is, when we meet with the committee, if it ends up being the Ju- uh July twenty-seventh meeting, those plans will all be in place for us to move forward if, if necessary. So we would have that a month in advance of having to do it itself. Um, moving, and I know that, I know that the committee knows this. Moving kids, particularly at this scale, is, is very disruptive. However, not more disruptive than unhealthy water. We certainly understand that. So we would be ready to move forward with that plan. And that was why we wanted to add a second meeting, so that we could give everybody an update, let everyone know what the plan is, um, and be ready to move forward with that, should this work not move forward.
Jason, can I ask a question? So the twenty-seventh meeting, if we do that, that you're gonna have the Plan B, we're gonna have the Plan B settled. So we're gonna know what we're doing.
Yes.
Is August fourteenth the date that we're notifying the community? Or how's that working?
August fourteenth would be the date that we would know whether or not we're gonna have to move forward with that plan. But frankly, if, if nothing is happening leading up to that, if there's still a lot of infighting, a lot of arguing, no plans are in place, they can't determine what needs to be done, it is feasible, we could know that sooner than the fourteenth of August. But we're using that as a drop dead date to say, okay, if nothing's happening, we're gonna need the two weeks to move classrooms and get things set up. But the transportation and all those other pieces would be in place before that. That's what we would discuss on the, on July twenty-seventh, exactly what all of those plans are. So if we need to do that, we'll be ready.
I would think by the twenty-seventh, we would know if, I mean, if permits have been applied for, at least that's a step in the right direction, showing that they're moving towards a solution. So should we wait till the twenty-seventh to give them a date? So that we're not, I don't know, like. I think the fourteenth is just. Because what if we give them the fourteenth as a solid date and then they've submitted the permit, but all the work's taken even further past the fourteenth, I guess is my concern.
So the cha- the only challenge with that is that it's gonna take about five days to do the actual chemistry change and then about two weeks of testing to make sure the water's okay.
So we can't give them like a deadline for them to do the permit, eh? Could we do that instead?
We don't have the authority to give them a deadline on anything. All we can say to them is that if this isn't done by the fourteenth, we're not having children there. That's the only thing that we have authority over, that we just say we're not putting kids there.
Personally, I don't think we should, I think they need to know two months after we met with them that this is how we feel. They need to know that we, we need assurance that this is going to be done by August fourteenth or we are not opening that building as a school building. You know, maybe we'll use it for something else, but we're not going to put our littlest kids there and argue over who's paying for bulk water because that's the position this building's going to be in, if they don't get this change out done.
I agree, I agree a hundred percent. Um, I, in my experience with these things, the this, so the town of Millville has the administration and Board of Selectmen, they have still, they have a consultant and then they have their water operator. The consultant and the administration disagrees with the water operator. That's a whole, and, so, yeah, I look at this as we're the tenant, you know, and they're from, they're, they're.
I agree.
And they, they're required to provide us with clean, safe drinking water. I think that was the title of the action plan, clean, safe drinking water. And, and just, that hasn't been happening. And, and so it's gotta be consistent. I would be, I would argue that I would want, you know, uh, you know, five days of setup or whatever and then two weeks of testing. I'm not confident even with two weeks of testing. Who's testing it? A week later, a week later, a week later, you know, because this has been going on for thirty years. And, and.
Well, and remember, they might be without the water operator. If, if the beavers, if Millville says they're not getting rid of the beavers, it doesn't sound like it's going to even entertain doing this work.
I, I.
He says that.
Yeah, he's gonna, he's, they'll terminate his.
Yep.
Yeah.
Contract with them, so.
So with that being said, how, how would they even hire and find someone else to do this work in that timeframe?
Yep.
Since this is.
No one wants to.
Don't like them.
No. And that, that was part of the thought process too, was, you know, having a second meeting in July would help have that discussion. We alone, a couple of weeks, what's, whether these wheels are moving or not. Um, and if they're not, to everybody's point, I think it is probably very clear the direction we need to move in if permits aren't even filed or if there's not even a water operator at that point. Um, but if they are, then they are. And then we work with that timeline and make sure things are done by the fourteenth so that we can test the water, make sure that everything is adequate and safe, and move forward in that direction.
If we're placing a bet, you, you know, your odds are not, not good.
Yeah, I'm not much of a betting man.
So they.
I don't deserve it.
This has been going on for so long and they're just gonna solve it quickly uh because we are, it just, it's not, the whole process, the government, the getting together, the fi- finding a new water operator, it just, why don't we just bring the kids to Blackstone, let them figure their problem, solve it, move them back in next year? It, we've got, there's, it just seems impossible for them, for Millville to come through at this point in su- in such a short time span and for us to gamble that they're gonna do it.
Well, if you look at the, if you look at what their water operator proposed, it's, and, and I know no one's had a chance to pour through the, and I totally get it, we just got it this afternoon. Um, but it's really direct. I mean, he says, remove the stagnant water, remove the beaver dams, get them out of there, let the water resign, uh, reside, and change the chemistry. I mean, he's pretty clear on what needs to, what, I, my confidence is in the process that he's outlined is very clear and direct. The question is whether they will, the, and the they being the town, the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator support that. They haven't to date. Um, so I think you're probably right uh as far as, you know, how that may play out, but we also haven't had this conversation with them yet. And I think, Erin, that's what you were saying. Um, so, you know, at this point.
I think we're, it's just a good move on our part to start our planning and not wait for them to. Uh, I, I, we need to have our Plan B in place.
Well, at the end of the day, our number one concern is the safety of the children and staff in the building.
That's right.
So we, we listen to the floor and with that.
So what I'd like to do at the, uh, if we can add a meeting in July, July twenty-seventh, if that works for folks, we can add it to the school building committee meeting. Um, provide a full update to the school committee in terms of where we are in our own planning, what that plan would be, where people would go, um, and, you know, lay out all the details of that and provide any updates that we may have by that point um or have received from Mass DEP or the water operator or the town. And at, at that point, we'll know what direction we need to go in. And we'll be ready to do that.
So if I, the decision is ultimately yours to make. Of course, you'd want the support of the school, the school committee.
Hmm.
Right, but it's.
The regional agreement is state-set, when there's an emergency situation like that, the superintendent can you laterally move the kids.
Yep. And so that's what I would consider this. Um, uh, but of course, I think you'll have overwhelming support, the school committee. Um, um, the regional director is Mary.
Yes, Mary June.
She was here that, that evening, correct? Yeah, and so I asked pretty clearly about the, the guidance on the muskrat and beaver guidance from the DEP. And she stated that, she didn't wanna discuss it.
Right.
So I don't see any resolution, you know, after thirty-one years and now, you know, um, uh, I'm more than happy to ha- attend that meeting on the twenty-seventh, but maybe if we can have on the agenda at, on that time, if we need to take an action to support you as a superintendent at that night, it's, it wouldn't hurt to have it on the agenda as well. That would, it gives you more time and the notification of the parents, I think, is, a month is better than two weeks.
After the meeting on the twenty-seventh, will we notify parents that this could be happening?
Yes. Yeah, well, and, and again, it's been set a few different ways tonight, but we might have a really good indicator already of what, to do by that.
I think we do.
Yeah, by, by, by that date. The extra time is again twofold. One, to give us time to finalize our plans. We do have some tentative plans that we're, that we're looking at. Uh, but we've gotta get in the weeds on that and make sure that everything's gonna work the way we think it is. And then the second is to give the town an opportunity. They just received this document when we got it today. So in fairness to, to that, giving them an opportunity to review the document and respond accordingly and letting them know that this work needs to be done complete and in place by August fourteenth or we're not gonna have kids in the building. Um, and I'm, and I'm glad that, a couple of you said it about the, the move because it's not going to be temporary in the fact that, you know, when we had kids that we moved from the complex to Millville a couple of years ago with the mold, that was like a week. This is not that. This is going to be for the year. We're not gonna, we're not gonna, you know, move kids, our youngest students at that, out of their classrooms at any time during the school year because they get the water fixed by then. We're just not gonna do that, that's bad for kids, that's very disruptive. And these are our littlest ones. Um, and then I do wanna just bring to the attention, another piece that we're gonna have to think about um is our, would be for our current first graders. By moving them to one building for first grade, then back to MES for second grade, then back somewhere else for, so we're in that situation where we don't wanna ping pong. So we're in that situation where we don't wanna ping pong the students back and forth, like we were a couple of years ago with COVID, remember we had to do that and we kinda built that out? So I just wanna forecast that as another piece that we're gonna have to think about, so we don't have kids... Because in that case, those students were in kindergarten at Millville, first grade somewhere else, second grade at Millville, third grade at the complex, and we can't do that. That's not good.
That's what we did with what, the second graders, when we started the transition.
Yeah, we kept them, we kept them, yeah. And then we, remember, we phased it out at the complex over time and phased it into M E S over time. So there was stability for the kids in that process. So I just wanna put that out there, it's just a piece for everybody to be thinking about when we come back on the twenty-seventh of plans.
Discussion to be continued on the twenty-seventh, then.
So we'll post for our meeting on seven, twenty-seven, at seven?
That works.
Erin, that works for you too?
Yeah.
Okay.
If I, is this gonna include the Millville Selectmen, or is it...
So my intention, and you tell me if you feel otherwise, my intention was it's a school committee meeting.
Okay.
Like, we've met with them, you all did, everybody did their part on it. I don't see this as a school committee productive. Okay.
We're really welcome to come, but I think this is our meeting to make sure all the school...
All the needs, so anyone can attend.
Yep, so we're all in agreement on that? Okay. Okay.
Then our next item, I go back to you, Juan, for M S B A update.
Yes, uh, just a couple of quick pieces. Um, uh, pleased to report that we, um, are just about finished with the actual, um, paperwork for our school building committee. We have that, uh, in place and ready to submit to M S B A. It's a little more technical than just kind of putting names in emails. You've gotta put certain roles and skills they have, and why we selected certain, you know, individuals. Um, so we've got all that information, uh, in the M S B A, uh, format that they're looking for. We're just waiting for one more licensure piece we have to include. Um, so that's just about ready. Our educational profile is, uh, fully done in draft form. Um, and that, it just needs to be revised. So those are two really important pieces. Um, the deadline for the school building committee form submission is, um, uh, July thirty-first. And like I said, we're waiting on one more piece, so we'll be submitting that any day now this week. And the education profile deadline is August thirtieth. And as I said, that's done in draft form. So it just needs a good revision and we're ready to go. So we're in very good shape, uh, from the perspective of, of all the pieces that are due over the summer. Because I think that's all of them, frankly, at this point. There'll be more, but that's where we are as far as July and August. And the school building committee, uh, scheduled its first meeting for, uh, Ju- uh, July twenty-seventh at six P M. And we'll be meeting in the, um, high school media center.
So do you want our next, that meeting that we are gonna post for the twenty-seventh to also meet at the high school then, in sense?
It makes sense. So there will not be air conditioning.
That could be at seven?
So the school building committee will meet at B M R at six, and then we'll have our school committee meeting at B M R at seven.
Right.
Rather than us all having to drive here.
Right, or come back for a second day of meetings, you know?
Alright, thank you for that. And then we will move to record the superintendent.
Alright, uh, so I have a very important, um, item on my agenda for the first of the three items, and I'm gonna ask one of our brilliant scholars to join us up front, Marissa Petterella, um, who has been working alongside Caitlin Jubba and, uh, our staff, including myself and administration, to really tackle the issue of vaping in our high school. Uh, you probably noticed in the survey feedback, um, and it was, it was on, I think, every group that we surveyed, um, how much vaping has become a challenge in our community, and isn't just our community. Uh, it's in high schools across the country, frankly. Um, but, uh, I know Marissa and, uh, her colleague Caitlin, who can't be here tonight, have been hard at work. We've met a couple of times, uh, at coming up with a plan to help, um, address some of the vaping. So I'm gonna turn this over to you, Marissa.
Yes.
And that, uh, slide thing will move with the, well, there.
So in our history class, we were assigned with our project, where we had to figure out a solution to an issue in our community. And my partner and I, we decided to go along with the issue of teen vaping, especially in the bathrooms at our high school. And we found that a lot of schools in the country and in Massachusetts were installing vape detectors in the bathroom to help combat teen vaping. And I, we created a website, but this is a slideshow with some of the most important information. So we sent a survey out to students, and some of the most important takeaways were that students were being exposed to vaping and e-cigarettes as early as sixth grade. The majority of students have experienced someone vaping in the bathroom while they're also in the bathroom. Students are experiencing others vaping in the bathrooms almost every single day. And over two-thirds of the students who responded to our survey agreed that installing the vape detectors would be a helpful addition to our bathrooms. It's also, I think, important to note how serious vaping is and how it negatively affects health. Vaping can cause things such as asthma, long scarring, addiction, cancer, nicotine poisoning, heart attacks, and seizures, and none of these things we want for our students at B M R. And then most importantly, the vape detectors. A vape detector is a device that has sensors with the ability to detect the presence of particles that are emitted by vapes. And with our research, we found that the Halo smart sensors are the best product out there. The best model would be the Halo three C model, as it is designed to protect privacy and doesn't include cameras. The price range is from twelve hundred to fifteen hundred dollars. And when purchased through the, a third-party seller, which is the most popular C W dot com, the devices are provided with a two-year warranty. Sensors can alert administration when there's vape detected through a text or email, and they can detect things, marijuana, vape, and as well as the aerosols that are often used to mask the presence of vape. And there's also a, an online dashboard called the Halo Cloud, which allows for device management and for the data to be tracked with history. And that's it.
You've done a lot of work on this issue.
And there's also a website with more issue. I can email it to anyone who's interested at mpetterella26@bmrdotnet.
Um, so, as you, again, as you saw on your survey, uh, but you probably didn't need the survey results to tell you that. I have a student that attends middle and high school, you may have heard it anecdotally from them. I know I've heard from both of my boys at home, this is also an issue in my community. And so, you know, I won't sit here and pretend that this is gonna fix it and that's gonna solve it, uh, but it could help, right? And what we're trying to do at this point is mitigation efforts and reduction efforts. You may recall Karen Young sat in front of the committee at the beginning of the year and talked about the I D S I program, and using that as an intervention tool, um, for kids who, you know, are struggling to quit vaping, kids who are caught vaping. Unfortunately, we've had kids go through that program, the same kids multiple times, they just can't stop. Um, the nicotine content in the vape cartridges is significantly higher than a regular, uh, nicotine product. And so our kids are up against a lot. So as much as we're looking at this from a perspective of trying to stop this in the bathrooms, so that students that don't, you know, participate in this, don't have to deal with it, we also wanna help on the other side of trying to address the health issue that we have, and, and really, an epidemic, frankly, as far as that's concerned. So, um, Denise, I know you've been working on looking into this particular product, do you have any updates on that?
Shieldset, it goes through a third-party vendor. It would have to be hooked up to the internet, so each one, each of the units would be individually wired within the bathroom. It would have, it would be twenty-four units. And it would, like, set the diameter in the vendor, and then it would come in and do all the installs. And they, they are through a desktop model, as you can see it, and we could have numerous people being notified at the same time.
Is there a protective cage that goes around it, so it doesn't get to strike?
I'm not sure, but there probably is something, just like how like the clocks in the P E have like that protective case. They probably have something out there that can also be used.
We have at the high school, um, uh, staff that are on duty outside the bathrooms that are open, the kids sign in, sign out. Um, so we do have an adult supervision mechanism in place that, if the sensor were to go off, we could have it text and notify individuals that are on duty. Um, we have to set up a schedule for that, but there is a mechanism to do that.
I think your question was more though, to make sure that whoever's going in there wanting to vape doesn't dismantle the sensor.
Yeah, it's a target for vandalism.
Sure.
And then, uh, the penalties for vaping aren't harsh enough.
So underneath the, uh, reform on student discipline, we're not able to do that. Um, we're not able to suspend on those issues any longer. Unless we have students that, or, and parents that do not want their child to participate in the intervention. So if we offer the intervention, and believe it or not, we have some that say, no, just suspending, I'm all set, then that is an option. In that case, we tend to, we will tend to suspend the students, because we're not gonna send them to go home, that's what they're looking for.
Did I hear correctly that there's, is there camera-enabled?
Um, no.
Not camera-enabled?
I guess this specific model doesn't have one specifically for privacy in, being in the bathroom.
Yeah. Common sense question. Uh, it says aggression detection, and it says get notified if fights and bullying, uh, students can, staff can yell for help? Does anybody know more about that? Cause, I mean, that could be abused by, huh, you know, kids that wanna have a little bit of fun with it and know the key words. I don't know, how, what does that look like?
Honestly, we, we haven't...
Oh, okay.
We're just at the introductory phases. Um, we haven't, um, met specifically with the vendor.
Okay.
If it was coming, um, based on anyone's suggestion, whether I, we wanna move forward and do some more research into this product.
If we do, I think that's a key component of what we're looking into and how that's, uh, how that works.
How that you bring that up, it, I think of the rate, because if you look at the little diagram up here, some of those things are...
Yeah, you can see, it, it has various, um, functions.
This is various models, so, and maybe I'm misunderstanding. The, the recommended was a three C model, right, which would be focused on the vaping? Would, would like aggression detection, would that be a separate model? Or is that all in that same model, do you know, or?
No, I think it is, I think it is a part of the same system.
It is?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
This is listed as action required?
Yeah, it should be information only.
Information?
Yeah, or just, just information tonight. We wanted to make sure that Marissa had an opportunity to present her good work to the committee.
That's great, yeah.
And we know we need to do something. And again, not thinking that this won't fix it all on its own, but it could be another tool in the toolbox to help minimize the use.
I just keep thinking back to the senior signing day, and every senior had to give a piece of advice. And I would have to say it was probably ninety percent of the students who said, avoid the bathroom if you can. So this just, I, this is a great project idea.
Thank you.
That's really...
Thank you.
About tapping into what our district needs.
The website is very well put together too. Marissa and Caitlin put together, so you have a chance to check it out. They did a nice job of putting the survey information and some of the facts there. It really painted a good, clear picture of the lie. It's not anecdotal, it's very factual, it's very poignant.
Please email that.
Okay. Okay, yes.
There'll action required on this one?
Nope, not, uh, not yet.
Maya?
Thanks, Marissa.
Thank you.
And thank you, Caitlin. Our students are really, like, they're thinking, they're...
Yeah. And I should mention too, the, you know, the last two, we, we had a few different discussions in front of the committee about some of the projects. That is a drop in the bucket of the outreach that students did to staff, administration, teachers, um, about issues that they're trying to help essentially solve, which is really great. We brought certain ones to the committee because they require, you know, financial support or, um, you know, facilities like the outdoor classrooms and those kinds of things. Uh, but they've done a lot of work in other spaces too, which has been quite impressive. Uh, they had a lot of questions around like budgeting and how that works, and how it's allocated and facilities, and the kids really have become very focused, uh, through this civics work, which is so good to see. Um, just two of the very quick items, um, under my report. Summer programming started today. We had a Twenty First Century program up and running. We had our, um, intervention and enrichment programs, um, start, which were great. Um, unfortunately, soccer clinic did not start today, although some of the students did come, um, and, um, but I got ahold of A D and we posted that the clinics were not on for today because of the, because of the weather. And then tomorrow starts E S Y.
Yes, for special education, and also ESL programs started today.
That's right.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we started our summer feeding, um, as well. So, um, lots of summer opportunities. Uh, I still had parents reaching out to me as recently as last week, that miss science, but wanted their student or their child to participate in something, so we were making those, uh, accommodations and getting kids in programs. So really good to, really good to see that all up and running. Um, and then lastly, under my report, just a brief update, the committee might remember, in the fall, I had asked for, uh, permission to negotiate with the union for an elementary team leader stipend. Uh, and it was for a team leader position for grades K one, two, three, four, and five. Um, we negotiated, uh, for months with them on their duties, their responsibilities, their amount. Um, and at the end, they decided they didn't wanna negotiate any longer. They wanna wait until the contract is open, when we do negotiations, uh, in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Uh, that's when we'll be negotiating with you today again. Um, so, a lot of, a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of conversation, uh, and at the end, they said, we don't wanna bargain anymore. Um, we're gonna wait for the contract to open up. So I wanted to make sure to loop back to the committee to let you know where that, where that landed. The issue will be coming back on the table, uh, but not until formal negotiations with the, um, teacher association. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And Denise, we're gonna...
We'll try.
Yes, thank you.
We're in the business office.
Thank you very much. Um, inside your packets, we have the, uh, reported general fund preliminary projection for our funding. And as I walk through the forms, you guys can have processing in the top left-hand corner. This is our E and D as it was stated. Our one point three was where we closed out. The use of the stabilization fund money and the, uh, funding for next fiscal year are listed in there, and it gives our ending balance. As you look below that, um, we now have some of our assessments and our revenues. And we have a variance column that's listed over to the right, and that's just the, um, difference between what we had projected and what we actually had received. And that comes down to the bottom, and as you look below that, we have our unbudgeted revenue. And that unbudgeted revenue is, is really important, because when we look at it, we spent some of that money as it came in, as you guys have gone through the budgeting, and that's a, a monthly basis, when we did some meetings, we kinda spent some of the money, and we hadn't actually recertified our budget. So in this process, we're gonna be allocating some money to cover some of that that we didn't do. So if you look below that, like I said, it's the eight twenty-eight. And then below that is our unappropriated balance, which is the four hundred forty-eight thousand. And then in the green area, that kinda, why it shows and is really important is because it brings us back down to getting to where our E and D is gonna be. And you remember on our monthly reports, as you would look at them, it looked like we had that four hundred forty-eight thousand, and this is where it's actually gonna be going when we finish it, and this is where our, our E and D will end up. As we continue over and you're looking into the other columns, some of the revenues that are in the additional funds spent over to the, all the way over to the right, those are gonna be what we're utilizing and how they come in, so that we can cover our balances on the bottom. That last table at the very bottom is where we had had our fiscal year twenty-three budget. The column next to that is what we expended, and you can see we, um, spent more than we had. And then our encumbrances, our encumbrances will encompass the salary that we have to cover throughout the summer and months. That's our biggest encumbrance, and thus leaving us with a current available balance, which doesn't match up to the, what we had had, because we spent revenues that had come in. So this evening, I'll give you guys a second to look at that, if anyone has any questions?
Denise, can I add one piece to that? Um, so one of the things to keep in mind, if you look at the F Y twenty-three budget, the twenty-six point five million, that does not include the charter sending and the school choice setting. That's about a million point five that's not included in that. Uh, that's an important number, because it's not in our general ledger number, but it's in our certified budget number. So what we need to do on our end is make sure... Um, so what we need to do on our end is make sure that that charter sending and school choice sending is monitored differently so that at the end, it doesn't look like we're one point two overspent because we're not. We actually ended the year with about three hundred eighty thousand dollars in the black. Um, which is why if you look at our E and D, you take the three hundred and twelve that we are left with and then you take the three hundred and eighty where we landed this fiscal year and that brings you to the six ninety-two. Were you gonna say that Denise?
You're definitely well acquainted than I am.
It's okay. The numbers are misleading because of the charter and the choice sending issue.
You want a motion?
Yes.
All in one?
Yes.
Okay. Is it okay, um, yeah, okay. I'll make a motion to allow the administration to transfer out of additional revenues to following amounts to each budget line. Three hundred eighty thousand, three hundred forty-three to the one thousand series administrative expense. One hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven sixty to two thousand series instructional expense. Four hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred sixty to three hundred series other student services. Four hundred seventy thousand, three hundred seventy-four to four hundred, uh, sorry, four thousand series building and maintenance. Two hundred twenty-five thousand, eight hundred fifty-two to five thousand series benefits and lease equipment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussions?
I'll just add that this is essentially just housekeeping, uh, just balancing the budget.
Alright, so we'll need to vote on this then. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? No, so making passes unanimously.
So the F Y twenty-two budget, I mean, audit is currently winding down. It's going to its close. We've gone through, um, we had single audits and single audits are, um, of the grants and of the food services program. And we also had our general audit where they audited all of our, our general ledger funds. Like I said, we are coming really close. They've had a lot of setbacks and timelines of things, um, not based on us, but based on them being pulled for other school districts. So we're running a little bit later than we typically would. We should be, like I said, having a report to you. Um, looking for the end of the month to have that report with their findings presented to you.
Um, Denise, is it okay? Can I jump back on one thing on this? One piece that I want to just make sure to mention, in the total E and D currently estimated, that's flagged in that greenish color, um, that does not include our reimbursement from the federal government on our technology, the two hundred and fifty thousand. So we can assume that that number will probably be a bit higher.
Yes, and that there's a two-week timeline on that. We received some notification and it should be two to three weeks. We are now actually actively looking to see it come.
It's been a long process for that one though.
It, it has been a very lengthy process and it's not necessarily very well carved out to say you do this, you do this. You, you do it and then you wait and then you have to get back. So probably, we said, we did receive some email notifications today saying it was approved.
Thank you very much.
So we can assume that'll be about two hundred and fifty higher, well, around there, right? It's about two fifty to thirty?
It's, we also have about seventy-eight thousand as part of the other chrome books for, for faculty members. Next item on the agenda is the vacancy and personnel update. Inside your packets. So we've been ambitiously working on bringing in some, some new staff. And as we have our postings here, the Millville Elementary, we had a special ed teacher that we've reposted. And then as we move to the complex to the right, the three-to-fives, um, we're fully staffed. So we're in the process now of doing all the onboarding process for the, these, um, new hires. So. Meeting with them daily. It's a great, a great opportunity. Very exciting. Going on to the middle school, the middle school, we are still accepting resumes for a science teacher, a technology teacher, a self-contained special education teacher and a paraprofessional. Must also say we have hired some positions, but these are just still the open vacancies that we're working on. The high school, we are currently looking for and accepting resumes for a math teacher, a technology teacher and one paraprofessional.
So we're getting close.
We are getting close. We are definitely getting close. The next page that you have in your packet, um, these, um, these are currently our hired people that we are in the process of onboarding and bringing them in. And as I stipulated, some of these are from the complex, the middle school and, um, Millville and then of course the high school. Do you want me to read through them or is this just for your?
Just place in file.
Oh, okay, place in your file.
It's definitely a busy summer in the district.
It is very busy. It's very busy.
Can, can I ask this? It, it seems like we're ahead of where we were last year though with vacancies. Am I saying it right, vacancies, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We're in really good shape. We set a deadline for our own team of June thirtieth.
Okay.
To try to have every, everything filled. Um, and we had finalists, uh, actually frankly, for about four of the positions on here that for one reason or another didn't work out. They had a bigger offer or just, you know, it didn't, for whatever reason, it didn't work out at the end. Licenseur issue, sometimes those things pop up. Um, so we thought this list would actually even have fewer positions, but it's, uh, the staffing isn't ever changing, but we are in much better shape than, than last year at this time.
Alright, then we'll just move to school committee forum. If anyone on school committee have anything to add to tonight's meeting.
I'll reserve my comments for July twenty-seventh.
Alright, nothing else, then that just moves us to upcoming meetings, which we just scheduled. The next one will be posted for July twenty-seventh at seven P M at B M R. And then our August meeting will be August twenty-eighth, here at the middle school at six P M.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are you abstaining? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.